As far as other personnel issues, we have Mrs., you know, Mrs. Kitzfelder has taken a new position in Camden, so I do have her letter of.
Hi, Gail.
Hi, sir, I'm late.
Were you to be shocked if you weren't?
We've got to leave this for Dan.
Oh, okay.
Again, while you're certainly almost welcome, this is a study session and no action to be taken here, we're just talking about a number of things right now. We were talking about enrollment and the fact that kindergarten for this year, it looks like they're covering somewhere around one hundred and thirty students, but with kindergarten, that's always in a state of flux, so we'll see what happens and where that goes. And last year was kind of a record for us in kindergarten, which creates a kind of a bigger class there, but we'll see what happens and see where all that goes.
That's based on the, on the, the signups that you had.
Yeah. And most of those in the upper grades are pretty, they're pretty constant at this point. We're not accepting open enrollment students, and so if it's anybody, it's somebody who's moved here or that kind of thing like that. But kindergarten is just one of those that you, you know, you never know. The school year opens up, what's going to go on, where everybody's going to be. Did have Mrs. Kitzfelder's resignation. I did get a copy of her resignation letter, so when we have our board meeting on the twenty ninth, we'll need to accept her resignation, and then Alana Neve has been named the interim director, and that would be a one-year appointment for that, so we'll be taking action on that as well when we get there. We have a couple of intervention specialists yet to hire, and you'll see that on the twenty ninth. Those are special educators, but we feel in pretty good shape there with that. We do have our longtime school nurse, Nikki McNorman, who is going to be submitting a letter of resignation there, so that's a position that we'll be looking at to go and fulfill. She was on a one-year leave of absence last year, and she is just elected not to come back, so we have.
I have a question on that. The, the replacement you referred to as Elizabeth Smith, is someone Elizabeth Hall?
Yes, did I put Smith on it? Yeah, Elizabeth Hall is the one who filled in for us last year. Sorry about that if I put Smith.
Is that she's, well, she's Hall as a senior secretary.
We're looking at that. I think she might have an interest in.
The nursing.
Yeah, in the nursing position, but first and foremost, we'll have to take care of Nikki and take care of that, so. And with Mrs. Neve coming on board and a new secretary coming on board, Ted Elsner, who had retired, is agreed to come back in the very short term but to help out with some things, and so that's really, really, that's very helpful. Hello, Mr. Elsner.
Save your seat.
Is that supposed to be then for a secretary?
We have not done that at this point, no. We will, but we haven't. How are you?
All right.
As you know, we have a pretty extensive title program, Title Tutoring Program, and that's primarily at the elementary level, and I did talk with Mr. Manley shortly before coming in here, and he and Mrs. Mavick are continuing to interview for that. We seem to have a pretty good flow of campaigns, so we'll have some recommendations for you when we get to the August twenty ninth as well. We have actually five more openings that we need to do and we need to fill there, so.
Openings for what?
These are title tutors. Titles, if you don't know, is federal dollars that we get every year, and we're never quite sure what we're going to get, and so now we've got our allocation, and so that determines how many people we can hire for the heart on an annual basis because that money is, comes to us federally on an annual basis. That was that. And the one that's hanging out there, and it'll just be a discussion to, to be continued, we did find out in our allocation for our federal dollars that we could have, looks, looks very possible like we're going to be able to have money to fund a staff development position. This is what Mr. Manley did for us last year, at least in, in one way, shape, or form, and so that was posted quite some time ago, and we have had some interest in that. We haven't done a whole lot on it because we didn't know if we were going to have the money, but it looks like we are now, so just to let you know, we're moving ahead with that.
Is that middle school again?
Well, the middle school.
Since the OIP.
Yeah, last year, the middle school was identified as an alert school, and that was because we were looking at the gap between the achievement of our regular students and special ed students, and so that wasn't bad news, but that was the kind of surprising news, but the good news that came along with that is there were some federal dollars to help with some staff development to address that, and then again, this year, there are some federal dollars that we can use to do that, so I think that's, that's a good thing, and that should, that could and should help us fund this position, this staff development position. And with the number of initiatives that are going on out there, it's just critical to have somebody in that role.
With the, with that money, because of the OIP, is there, like, if it's sixty percent geared towards, does that money have to be, go towards the middle schools because of the OIP, or can it be that money, that money fills the position?
Well, you know, yes and yes. There's, we have a little bit, and Mr. Telsor may want to chime in on this. We have a little bit of discretion with that. What we're looking at right now is because, again, nothing's particularly wrong with the middle school, their regular ed students are achieving at a pretty high level. We're concerned about our, the gap between our special ed kids and our regular ed kids, so we're trying to provide some resources there to help teachers in the area of staff development. So, we would look at probably half of that, half of the salary on that person. That's the going thought at this point, and then the other half would be for the rest of the district. Really with the primary focus at the high school, because we're looking at where our achievement gaps are, are the greatest, and it seems to be at the middle school and high school level, but again, a great thing to be able to do and to have, bring somebody in to look at that type of thing.
And that, that person is still in the process of.
Yeah, we, we, as I said, it was posted for quite some time. We have interviewed a couple of folks, but I'm not, at this point.
Right.
Ready to give you a firm recommendation on that, but I think we will have one by the, by the twenty ninth. And, Mr. Telsro, under finances, is there anything that you'd like to share with me?
No, just last enough data. I may have already sent an email out on this, but we did get all the filings done with the board election, so we are on the ballot for November. It's a three-quarter percent school district income tax, and it's going to read somewhere in the vicinity of one point nine some million dollars once we're to pass it and everybody's accustomed to paying it. From what I understand, there's bugs that need to be worked out early, early on, causing some of the collections to be slower, but eventually, when everything gets rolling, it's one point nine million years.
Okay.
Pretty much, yeah.
Dan, anything else?
Do you think the hand enforcement situation is taken care of at the success basis?
Yeah, yeah.
Personal issues and. You know, I, I could add, we're, you know, in the process of working on the appropriation. It takes almost to the end of September, but we're working on that. We have, we had our gap auditors or gap accountants in a couple of weeks back, and we've since given them all the material, proportion of material for the conversion, and the auditors' office have had people in here for, thinking off and on for the last two to three weeks tonight, understanding they're at least temporarily wrapping up their field work to come back away at a point in time when we have our gap statements fraud, so that's, that's going along pretty well, so.
Okay, all right. We've had a couple of facilities, committee meetings, since last week I got together, and maybe just to bring up to speed on a few of those kinds of things. The, and Mr. Wallace and Mr. Chris are on that particular subcommittee, but we were able to finish up the bleachers on the visitor's side with a lot of good volunteer help, which was nice.
Did they get inspected, though?
You know what, I haven't talked to Larry about that, but I think, I think.
Every section of yours.
What, Dan?
Could be.
He did say there was somebody from, from the property insurance people, which is different than the, you know.
Inspection.
OSHA-type people, and he didn't indicate that there was any issues, so I know that, I got the impression that they had them to look at.
It looks really impressive from another night when you look that way.
Mm-hmm.
Stage four got completed?
Stage four is done, that's right. Looks, that looks good, too. We still have not come down on a decision or whatever on the extension. Still looking at that and still working around.
Is there a drawing for that?
Uh, Larry had.
I believe he did.
Yeah, he had a drawing for that.
He said, "Just wait till it's dry," so. It's supposed to be ten days of, is it, what bank is it? Middle?
I think it's the middle bank.
On the far side?
No, on the side. Supposedly, if they unhook one light, there's one light that's bad. If they want that one light, it would be fine. I mean, you just wouldn't have one light. It's shadow, but it's pretty shadowy down here. They haven't been adjusted. They've been being adjusted for several years.
Don't face this.
No.
Don't face the field.
I think you just put them up in a part like hole that's pointing down, so if you're in that corner doing corner kicks, work real well.
Only for a corner kick.
It's right down on the corner.
Earl and I can talk a little bit about the Busch Club. I mean, we went, there's pretty good attendance at this, and we might say.
Yeah, all the two coaches were there.
And talked about the priorities and then gave a little presentation on how the meeting went between the boosters and the board members that were present, so seemed to be all positive and we got some direction, I guess, so.
In that note, too, Mr. Telsro, I can share with you a little bit about our meeting last Tuesday night. We've never had one quite like that before, but I think that that was a good one, too. I think it was good and positive. We had representatives, I think, from every one of our support organizations, and nobody from choir, but there's some discussion about whether the Quo boosters are going to extend existence exactly the way they are, and if they do, that's fine, and we'll sit down and roll over that information, but Mr. Telsro did a nice job. They were there for about ninety minutes, I think.
There wasn't any, like, throwing of anything?
You know what, everybody seemed to be, I'll tell you, I was, this were PIES, PTAs, the Alumni Association was there, members of that, band boosters were there, the regular booster, our athletic boosters were there, yeah, and that was pretty much the group. I was impressed with a number of people who were pretty much up to speed on the kinds of things they needed to do. There's a lot of different things that have come out a lot here, so, from Columbus that we need to take care of, and they were very good to be able to do, having to, to get to speed on that, but there were some things, some filings and some other stuff like that that people needed some help with, but Mr. Telsro was able to steer in the right direction and offer to do some help, and there was some pretty good sharing of information there back and forth as well. So I, I think in talking with people a little bit afterwards, too, they appreciated it, and they thought it was a pretty good use of time to do that, so.
Yeah, there was, I had gotten some material from the OHSAA and some kind of do's and don'ts, and it was, it was, it was a meeting that they had basically for booster clubs, but I mean, all you've got to change some of the words, the concepts are all the same. So we went through the do's and don'ts kind of thing, and we also went through some recommended accounting types of procedures and stuff.
So will we have a printout that says what exactly they're to do, and did everyone get one of those?
We, we, we gave them the policies, policies and guidelines, so they all understand, you know, that they have, they have a obligation to submit their bylaws and some of those kinds of things. And we went through for, we touched on, and certainly they got some, some materials on the filing that's recorded by the Attorney General's Office, and, you know, the accessibility of that information once it's on the file and filing and stuff. Second, what Dr. Weingart said, that, you know, there was a lot of interest and a lot of questions and, you know, one, and, you know, along the lines of, we want to make sure we're doing things right, kind of questions, you know, so. What, what do we have to do? Is there anything to do with, like, the Little Warriors, football and basketball? Are they considered support groups and say sometimes use our facilities and, or not? That question, that question did come up.
Sebring West Branch Soccer and Slodwick Softball, a basketball.
Yeah, that was, that was pretty much the answer, yeah. We look upon it and jump right into it. We're trying to do what the PTAs and PIES operate, having Damascus around in Knox, around the middle school, the band, sorry, it's out of the band, the athletic boosters operate out of this, Little Warriors, Sebring West Branch, softball league and soccer league and other things like that, even though they use our facilities, do operate independently, right? And so in that particular case, we are happy to sit down and go over things with them, but as far as the district's liability insurance and those kinds of things like that, they extend to the kind of groups that are named, Damascus PIE and that, so that's why we tried to focus on them. We even talked a long time about the Alumni Association, but it is the West Branch Alumni Association.
I wonder if that was.
Yeah, they, they being made here, and they do operate, you know, under, under our policies and guidelines.
So the Sebring West Branch Community Foundation would not be part of that?
It could be only that they don't get into too many situations where they're, where they're doing things, fundraising and those kinds of things like that, so. As I said, it was the first time out for us to do that, so we thought we'd start small, make sure that we hit all of the major support groups so that we could go over things with them. And as you know, that sometimes, you know, there's also funds that are raised at the school sometime, at the elementary school, that if it's something that is initiated by the PTA and is run by the PTA, and then, you know, those, that funding goes to them, their carnival and those kinds of things like that. If there are, let's pick this up, if they're going to go on a field trip somewhere and that money comes in, that money goes into the school account, which is called, usually called the principal's account, and so we've talked a little bit about the designation between the two, what's appropriate for one and, and not the other, and, you know, Dan gives them some pretty good guidelines and some pretty good examples of how to go forward with that.
Did we talk about trips, the way that those are to be run?
A little bit. For those folks who do take trips, there are some specific and more detailed guidelines that go along with any type of a major trip that's a multi-day kind of trip that will be doing, I think, this is probably a young and alive year, isn't it, to want a trip, so. And I know that John's already been in to talk a little bit about that.
I don't think, I don't think the Sebring West Branch Community Foundation would be part of it, because that would be no different than the various different scholarships that are out there to people.
Yeah. Couple of dates that I want to make sure that you have on your calendars. These haven't changed since I gave you the ring, but maybe talk a little bit about what that's going to be, believe it or not. Yeah, school's going to be starting up there. This Thursday at eight o'clock in the high school cafeteria, we will have all of our new staff members. And if you are able to come right at eight, I can get you introduced and let you have a chance to at least say hi to everybody, and I'm sure I can have you on your way by nine o'clock at the latest, but I know sometimes you like to be able to do that. Then what the new staff will do, they'll be, pardon me, they'll be with, mostly with the folks out of Dan's office after that, to go over medical insurance and all the different paperwork that they need to do and they need to get done. There'll be members from the teachers' association will be there. There'll be members from our LPDC, the Professional Development Committee. They'll go over information with the teachers on what they need to do and how they need to file those papers for continuing education credits, that kind of stuff like that. So anyway, that's going on this Thursday here. We won't be waxing, I promise you. Freshman orientation, at least at the high school, is on the twenty-third, and that, from eleven to five, and we have a home football scrimmage that night against Edison. Where's Edison?
Columbia, somewhere.
Oh, is that in the corner?
That's the Jamboree, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah. And so we'll, what they usually do is end the orientation officially about five and then have a cookout, and then any of the kids, we really encourage them to come to the ballgame, so we'll be doing that, working away with that. And we have home opening volleyball on the twenty-fourth.
Do you, do you happen to know if there's no, is there any issue to the Jamboree, or is that part of the, do you know that, John?
No, that's in the rest.
Is that part of the?
My card doesn't work.
Twenty-third.
No, no, I was thinking, no, no, I was thinking, you know how they do that? They used to do that at the foundation.
Right.
Was that the same thing?
Yeah, that's a good question. I don't know, because our next, the following Friday, we go.
It's full season, man.
Yeah, even though that's not.
Crestwood, Crestview.
Crestwood.
Crestwood.
And then the next week is Crestview.
Yeah, next week's Crestview, yeah.
Have a good time, you know.
Okay, so a question, is there?
I don't think that there is.
The twenty-sixth is the first day, first day with the staff is to report to school, and that will be building-centered, but if you recall, in the higher improvement process, the OIP process, we have district leadership team meetings on a regular basis. So the first district leadership team, the DLT, that Mr. Wallace and Mrs. McGaughan, Mrs. McLaughlin have attended in the past, will be at three fifteen, and that'll be over at the middle school, where we've been meeting before. That'll be a big conclusion of that particular day.
Is that Monday?
That is Monday.
Probably campus.
Yeah, and that's sort of come if you can. And then on Tuesday, we'll do things a little bit differently. We'll start here at eight o'clock in the cafeteria, and I, I always appreciate it when board members can come, but I don't want to hold you up all morning with that. But we need to get everybody's picture, because we're going to be wearing lanyards next year and IDs, picture IDs, everybody's going to be doing that.
I think that's a really good idea.
Yeah, and people's access to the building will be key to that, actually.
Do you want us to all do that, also?
Yes, yes. You all need to get one as well. So usually what we do is we.
I can't be here.
We can, for those who can't be, though, we can get them later, but we, this is the one time where we pretty much get everybody under one roof, so Mr. Dunlap has kind of, we agreed to come up, and he's going to take the majority of the pictures. Then Jim Graham and Lynn have a camera, and they can do it on a individual basis, but we're going to try to get that taken care of and.
Will Mr. Dunlap touch up the picture?
You are what you are. None of them dare have the, yeah, six years ago pictures. I'm sorry. But we will have, oh, usually what we do is we have sort of a continental breakfast for a half hour and then go into the auditorium. What we're going to do is we're going to extend that for an hour, and then we'll dismiss people by groups and have them go out. Like, Damascus, it's not time for you to get your picture taken, and then Knox, time for you to get your done. And if you remember back to your days of getting school photos, these aren't portraits, they're just photos, and they'll probably quickly. So we should be able to get everybody through by nine o'clock. What I'm going to do is I'm going to do some initial introductions actually in the cafeteria, so I'll introduce board members there. So if you do need to go, if you need to get to work, you can spin off and do that. You don't need to stay until nine o'clock. And at nine o'clock, we'll move into the auditorium, where we have the annual bloodborne pathogen training that we'll go through, and a few other requirements that we need to, to do and to handle. We'll introduce new staff, those kinds of things, and then at eleven fifteen, if you write that down, if you are available, the Damascus Friends Church, since we can't all fit in the subway, right? What's going on at the corner? Anybody know what's being built at the corner down there?
I wonder if that's.
Family Dollar.
Family Dollar, that's what I heard. Is that true?
Yes.
Do we need another Family Dollar?
Well, we don't have a Family Dollar. That's different than what we're here, right?
Dollar General.
That's Dollar General, of course. I always thought that corner would be an easy place to put something.
Not a Dollar General. Maybe another restaurant.
They go up pretty quickly, so you never know. But anyway, we don't really have a place to, to feed everybody. In the last several years, the Damascus Friends Church has provided a lunch for us, or there's an outreach there. It's very nice. So you are all invited, and you are all most welcome to attend that. Maybe about three hundred of us, and a very short period of time, and just do a very nice job, so.
Good speaker.
I don't know. That's always usually a bit of a mystery, John. Kind of keeps that a little bit of a mystery, so. I would tell you, too, that I've been contacted by Pastor Mark Wright, and he is at the, he's Beloit Friends, but he's also serving as the president of the West Branch Ministerial Association. And, you know, once a year, we, the administration has a meeting with the ministers, so we'll be doing that hopefully sometime in September. It's just good to meet anybody new that they have on board and for them to meet anybody new that we have on board, that kind of thing, and also to talk through just protocols and, you know, God forbid, something happens where we need some help and assistance. They've always been great to do that, so we'll be talking with them a little bit about that. And then the administrators, again, we always pick out a Sunday. This way, this year, we're heading toward October the thirteenth, which is a Sunday, and we would certainly invite board members to participate, too. There are fifteen or sixteen churches located in the West Branch boundaries here, and we try to, at least every other year, get out and say hello and visit with them on Sunday, and the kids always seem to get a kick out of it when they see their principal, and others come in. At least they tell us they do, so we don't know. But it's a nice outreach, and it's something we've been doing the last couple of years, so we'll be doing that and working on that as well. Just a couple more things. Nationally, the Campfield Fair goes on with the Labor Day. We have a number of our kids over there, so that's always fun if you have time to.
Do you feel sad that you don't have a.
I will have to let you know once I go over there. I don't have to get up early in the morning, but I still would rather get up real early in the morning to do that, yeah. The third is a staff development day here at school. That's the Tuesday afterwards. We do have open houses that night, elementary, at the elementary schools. That's from four to six. Uh, we do have open houses that night, elementary, at the elementary schools, that's from, um, four to six. And, um-
When's that?
That is going on, um, September third, Tuesday, September third.
When's it, it was four to six?
Four to six, yeah. Appreciate people doing that and standing for that. And I'm sorry, I'm gonna back up, on the twenty-seventh, August the twenty-seventh, uh, from three to four, that's the middle school open house. We'd like to give the kids lots of information, but they don't want to get their locker kind of on their schedule, that's what they're anxious to do. We always have really good turnout for that. Uh, the fourth is the absolute very first day of school. And, um, I think it'll be a little different this year. Uh, the past several years, because we've had half-day kindergarten and then we've had kindergarten where the kids will live with us all day, but it wasn't, uh, truly full-day kindergarten, we staggered the start, uh, for our kindergarten students. So we would have, bring half of them in on Wednesday, half of them in on, the other half in on, um, Thursday, and then we'd bring everybody, all the kindergarten kids, in on Friday. But because of our, um, summer program, the success by six, uh, which at least half of our kids attended, which was neat. And I'll give you an update on that as we go on down and get into, uh, September. But again, great, uh, initiative, partnership between, uh, PNC Bank and, um, United Way, which is no, no state or federal dollars, just, um, agency funding for that, so that's been terrific. But anyway, what we'll do is we will start with our kindergarten kids on the fourth, absolutely, positively, right then and there. So, uh, that part is good and we're looking forward to, um, all-day kindergarten for the first time.
All the buses pass inspection then?
Uh, we had some that did not, but then they had many things they needed to do and then, yep, they're up and they're ready to go. Uh, we're gonna, the, um, high school and the middle school, we're adjusting the times on those just a little bit. Actually, the high school and the middle school are gonna be on the same schedule now. There's always been like a ten-minute lag. Well, last year, uh, we tried to come and bus drop off and pick up, and, uh, that seemed to work out well, very well. So we were able to get everybody on the same, uh, schedule with that, and that's, in West-
What time is that?
Uh, it will be, uh, seven thirty-five to two forty, that'd be the actual times, but I was gonna just joke with you a little bit, but, you know, in West Branch, well, we depend on our, uh, buses, I mean, we have lots of buses on the road at any given time. One of the things, two of the things that really, um, impact busing that a lot of times people don't know or don't think about, uh, one of them is the, um, Career Center, the JVS, and it's trying to get the kids there at the right time to do that. And it's, uh, no easy trick to get everybody delivered, who needs to be delivered here? And then while some of the kids drive to the JVS, the rest of them need to hop on the bus and, and get over there, and we don't want them to be late. So, that kind of drives things in the morning, and by going to, uh, a, uh, common time, that should help that. We won't be waiting for kids to come in, so we're pleased with that part of it. That is something that has been a, uh, a challenge for years for us. And then the second part is, um, if, if you've had people out at the elementary in a while, um, you know, sometimes it's, um, a little, difficult to get the elementary kids picked up in a timely manner and get them headed home. And a lot of times that's because we're, uh, the two dismissals here, we're waiting for that and, um, also waiting to make sure that we've got the kids back in the JVS so that they can make their connection. So, uh, with these new times, we think that that's gonna be helpful, because we'll literally be able to get, um, people, um, the first run of our buses, in the afternoon, we'll be able to get them out on the road, um, ten minutes earlier than, um, they have in the past. So that means they're gonna be able to get to the elementaries ten minutes earlier as well. So that should be good, that should be very good.
I had someone ask how soon they could drop their children off at the elementary schools prior to school starting.
Well, you know what, the, the best answer to give them, and, and the principals, both elementary principals are back and-
My brother said not till after Labor Day.
Oh, no drop the law after Labor Day, oh.
He's a character.
Ah, anyway, as far as that goes, I just have to call the school director to find out.
I was wondering, um, last year, we talked about this, um, probably two years ago, we talked about this. The, the, without doing the survey, and I found that Poland, when I was looking for directions, Poland. Cause a bunch of roads are closed, I understand they're open now, but, uh, anyway, they have a survey, and it's like, you know, same questions that we were gonna ask. Do you know if we ever did do the survey or if she ever did initiate the survey? And, um, you know, the ridership survey was the question.
You know, I think the answer to that is, is yes, and, but, but you've never seen any results of that.
Correct. We're, 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 you know, it was the, the idea was is that the survey was to, uh, determine the intentions of those. And we were gonna then, be, she was then gonna be able to modify, um, the schedule accordingly, based on what the responses were in the survey. And she was supposed to be doing that over the summer, and I can tell you that I didn't receive the survey.
Okay. Uh, I need to check on that, but you know what, I, in having a conversation with her, I, I believe that she did do that.
Okay, maybe she just assumed I wouldn't, I didn't need a bus.
You didn't want, you didn't-
You didn't want to need a bus.
Now, this is the, they were surveying the kids, right?
Yeah, basically, it's just-
High school, yes.
High school kids.
They're asking the high school kids, you know, do they intend to ride a bus? And if so, how many days a week, so that they can kind of get her here or back, right, here or back.
Yeah, yeah.
So that they can make a determination on the need, the needed bus routes, or at least the anticipated bus routes.
Cause like, my freshman niece will ride the bus in the morning, but she will not ride it at night, at least during soccer season.
Right.
Like that, like that type of thing.
And it changes in the s- in the seasons, because fall squads are-
She'll ride it again in the winter.
Right, her lowest attendance on bus routes.
We had talked about, um, excuse me, September the fourteenth. I have written down, this is under, um, strategic planning there, but I have written down that, um, we had talked about, an eight to noon study session for the board.
Sorry, what am I doing?
Okay, and that, um, we were gonna try to focus it, because it's a good segue to that, on, um, the supervisors. And at that time, ask, um, transportation to come in, cause we try to at least once a year, give them a, a bit of a, um, a time and an audience so that they can update us on, uh, various things. But that would be, um, Sherry Malloy, the transportation, would be Larry, um, from, uh, with, um, maintenance facilities, uh, Lori Weingart with, um, food services, and then Jim Graham.
Probably wouldn't need to have her in here already.
Probably sooner. Sooner than that, but, yeah, yeah.
What about Mr. McCosky in sports?
Well, that's why I kind of threw it out there.
Is it a time period, right?
Well, if we go, it gives everybody, my experience is a half hour, it's just not enough with these guys. And, and it's not, therefore, they just have a lot of stuff to, to, um, share with us now. And if we had all four of them, we could just, they would give each one an hour to come in. And I think as we move forward and, and talk about the things that we want to talk about, that was-
Certainly, say, thanks for, like, before the chief builder, if you catch up, you have a little better?
Well, and, and as far as Mr. McCosky goes, he's a frequent flyer, and we do try to have him and, um, or, uh, Miss Geiger, um, come in at the conclusion of one of the seasons. So let me just throw that out to you, would you, um, as soon as our meeting-
And it'd probably better for him to be after the season, so, because the season's already started.
I mean, one of them, one of them could come in, um, the other ones could come in, uh, study session, uh, study session before the September.
Oh, September.
Well, uh, do you want to do that, or do you want to look at maybe even the twenty-ninth?
Yeah. Let's do the other one in September, work, September, workshop.
Okay.
That way, that way, that might be good.
Cause the sports are already in, so.
Okay, alright.
We lost that, that's them and-
Well, I mean, actually, I may have, um, special services, uh, come in and talk with us at, uh, on the twenty-ninth, that's probably more appropriate for that.
So then we're gonna have, uh, technology, facilities, transportation, and food services.
Yep, that's, yep, yep, okay. Yeah, I have, um, contacted all of them and asked them to pick that on their, um, calendars for that.
I'll just be here in this conference room like the other, probably.
Probably over there, yeah, it's just a little easier to get in and out of. You all know the Hall of Fame is, um, on the twentieth of September? And that'll be at the ballgame, and then there's that reception afterwards.
How did the golf outing go?
You know what, it, uh, cause we used to have it on Sa- we used to have it on Saturday, uh, of the Hall of Fame, but, uh, they moved it, uh, to July to give it a shot. And I think the feeling of the group was it, it went, um, well, we had at least as good a turnout as we've had in, uh, and you do it in September, sometimes the weather's not the greatest and it's just a very busy time for that. So I think, um, we have an alumni association meeting on Wednesday of this week, and they'll kind of be recapping that a little bit, but I, I think they'll probably want to try to do it again.
The dance was a big moneymaker?
The dance was a big moneymaker, yeah, that worked out well.
Almost seven hundred people, seven hundred?
I don't know, every, every time we talk to them.
It's different.
Bigger.
Bigger.
I'd say seven hundred and twelve.
Yeah.
Oh, my family, that was the twelve people right there.
There were at least, uh, six hundred. We figure who are coming along, twelve, that's most, that was helpful. And then the dinner, the Hall of Fame dinner is on the twenty-first, so you'd be getting some information about that, we do that and maybe you-
We don't have those names yet for them.
Who's Hall of Fame, yeah? It's okay, it's public, so. I just haven't written my release yet there to give this out to you guys. Yeah, they've all been notified and, uh, we'll, uh, keep this.
Great news.
Great news. Hall of Fame.
You got new skill?
Yeah.
Tight end. I guess I didn't.
I didn't have it marked, yeah.
I didn't make it.
Had to get a letter.
Yeah, I've got your letter, yeah, yeah, I've got a letter, you're out.
That's all right, you can ask them.
Here we go, here we go, it's, um, Joe Meisner from the class of nineteen sixty-three. And then, um, Chuck Campbell, our, uh, basketball coach here for a number of years, college basketball coach. Um, Sis Woods, Jennifer Sis Woods, who's athlete coach and also, um, PE teacher.
Seventy-seven.
Class of seventy-seven, yeah.
Mm-hmm, class of seventy, and then, um, actually from my class, um, Tom Price, who, um-
And he was a wrestler?
He was our first state qualifier.
What year was that, you wanna say?
That was like sixty-two or something.
No, no, I, it was, well, he, he probably qualified in seventy, yeah, yeah. And then from the, um-
Wrestling started in sixty-eight, so.
That's not bad, that's not bad, that's right. Then we, um, we're gonna bring in a couple, uh, this time, Lennon Linda Slack. I suppose, a long time, you know what, they, yeah, they never worked anywhere else from here?
Yeah, I think that's where they-
Yeah, I'll bet you, you're hard pressed to find anybody that's been to wrestling since then.
And still come.
Larry Reli.
Larry's the next one.
Yeah, Larry.
Oh, oh, Larry's the next one.
Larry Reli, so you got a community, yeah. Just for doing the bleachers, he should get it.
That's right, yeah.
So anyway, yeah, that's what that is. And Gail and Jeff, others, I will get you, uh, I'll release in the bios, I'll forget those from everybody.
Thank you.
But it's pretty much the same stuff that we've normally done with the announcement at the football game, so if you have a photographer there at the football game, you can do that and get that in there.
Usually you have them, uh, s- six-point type, three pages with ten, uh, ten-
Bios, yeah, sentences to read it.
To get it done.
Need John to read really fast, is John still gonna be our voice?
Well, I asked somebody about that the other day, and as far as we know, yes, he said that he would be there, so, the voice of the warriors should be continuing. Alright, well, let's, um, continue our discussion on, uh, the levy. And, um, just any thoughts that you have on that, and, um, any thoughts in terms of, um, what we do, where we go, any questions, if you've been getting that type of thing like that?
Want to paint it on my big size?
Do you still have, do you still have sides on there?
You'll have to paint over the warrior head.
Yeah, levy, maybe.
Well, yeah, we need to, um, certainly get one with a, a levy steering committee and, um, well, in the past, what we've done is we've also, um, had a subcommittee of people who will look at, um, voter registration and about, um, working groups to, to do that and about that, and, you know, certainly, uh, publicity and information, uh, types of things as we've gone along. But, um, what are your thoughts in terms of the makeup of the steering committee? What we, um, usually do is, um, try to invite people of various, uh, backgrounds and have, who have different interests, different connections in the school to start a discussion. From a district's point of view, you know, we're sort of related to providing information, which we can do in responding to any kind of questions, which there are, uh, or which may come up, but, um, cheer it up for instance. Oh, there's Mr. Chris, hey.
Hey, cheers. You have my, I was gonna just, I was just eating anyway.
Thanks for one minute.
It's wonderful.
How you doing, Jim, this stuff?
Good.
Good, good, good.
We did that yesterday.
What's that?
We did that yesterday.
I was?
Yeah.
It's a heck of a conference room. Forty feet long.
We were just, we had just begun, you came in at a good time, we had just begun a, uh, discussion about, um, levy and, um-
Your nominee is chair of it.
Yes.
Steering committee.
Well, I think there should be representatives, personally, I think there should be representatives of, uh, all the buildings, but, I mean, not necessarily employees, but, you know, P I E type people, so, those type of, uh, some-
Community members, every, every, every elementary, every primary school.
Because the first thing we need to do is, is, um, you know, we held a series of information nights last year. And that was really, uh, we had nothing, no proposal out on the table, so, at least at this, uh, particular time is to, uh, provide information to people and invite them, usually it's a nice way to do it if you start with a core group to make sure that you sort of hit each one of the, uh, groups and then ask them to, um, invite people along as well.
I think there should be representatives from the W B E A, surely they would want to participate in the W B C E A.
Correct, okay. And I have not talked to those, um, two presidents, but I did receive an email from both of them. And they would, um, have asked to get together to share some information, so we can certainly do that.
I have a suggestion that we make a DVD, um, and, um, send it out to every student or every family that has a child in the West Branch district, just giving our statement and why we're-
We could put it online, that way we don't have to make DVDs.
Well, we could put it online, although I don't know that that would get to everybody.
It's about ninety-five percent.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know what it costs to make one DVD, is it?
That was just the thing I heard yesterday on the news, or Saturday, it was ninety-eight point two percent of all households have, in our area, have internet access or computers.
Oh, uh, that's probably about just-
Yeah, some areas down in Knox Town, Chippewa, that-
I was gonna say, there's some limited.
Limited, uh, connectivity, but I do believe that it's very high. That's actually, the cell phones are actually the, how it's increased because of the fourteen.
Stand on my back porch with your leg up in the air and your arm up, you can get someone.
Sure.
I'm on a hill.
Okay, so we would definitely want, um, somebody from the Damascus area. And somebody from the Knox area.
Well, that's like, maybe the Tyrese or something from those- Well, that's like, maybe retirees or something from those areas.
Middle school.
And if retired, it'll get the.
Larry Relai.
Well, I'm thinking too, when we were having a meeting the other day with the various support groups, even, even make sure we have representatives from the band boosters and athletic boosters.
Coral, the old boosters or whatever.
Man boosters.
So the idea would be try to reach out to those groups, they could form their committee, and then you would, you wouldn't need to be done, definitely.
At this point, one of the best things we can do is just to make sure that we have accurate information that we can get out and we can share for this.
Probably those groups that are notified or asked.
Well. Probably starting with the officers, that's a group that we at least have, and asking the officers to come to an informational meeting and then to ask them to invite anybody else that they, they would want to do, invite, wanna come and be a part of that, so. As far as the actual promotion of the levy and that type of thing like that, we of course need to be, currently we as board members and we as public employees that we're, we can provide information, but we just have to provide neutral information and respond to those kinds of questions.
The problem, people, these people should be residents of the school.
Voters, registered voters.
That's what's always really kind of interesting, is how many people are not registered voters. Do you know, copy ahead, I don't mean to spread them, but how soon people need to register in order to vote in the fall election, is that's probably a good question? Cause we'll get asked that question soon. Are you starting to get questions? Okay, cause the other thing I thought we could do, as we've done in the past, is as we get questions, is to, we did that, if you recall, when we had our meetings before, and inviting people to email us those questions, and then we post them so everybody could see them. So that's always kind of a nice thing to do that, but. Are you starting to get some of those that you could share?
You know, I do, I do know the answer to the question.
Okay.
Last day for voter registration for November election is October the seventh, according to this.
Okay, November seventh. Yeah, we do have voter registration information in the central office. Do you have some times that would work better than others to try and get together to try to have that first meeting? What are your thoughts about before school versus after school? A lot of folks are gone before Labor Day. And that's coming up relatively quickly. The nineteenth or thirteenth, there might be some time to do that, yeah.
He didn't say a day.
Are there days that don't work for you guys?
Monday with your friend. No.
Well, it's usually an evening type of a deal, yeah.
Yeah.
We do try to stay away from Wednesdays because of church day and church visits. Not church visits, but just church activities. Uh, you want, maybe shoot for the twelfth, September the twelfth? Is that a good day, not good?
September twelfth, what time?
What day?
Uh, Thursday, September twelfth, yeah. Maybe seven? Now, I don't have anything listed, I've tried to list all of my athletic, you know.
Yeah, I don't see anything on this.
So like seven o'clock, you're talking?
Nothing. Seven o'clock, September.
Yeah, they get it on their facts.
No games, no nothing, we're good.
Did I see? Of course, it's soccer season, we're probably, we're rainouts.
Rainouts, yeah.
Snow outs.
Hopefully not September.
Nobody's won, no.
May twentieth is, no, right, so.
Yeah, it's been a long time since we've done a levy here. And I'm sure that the computer makes that a whole lot easier. But what I was pleasantly surprised about before is, you know, we're able to get, it's public information, we're able to do a listing of everybody who lives in the West Branch district, who is a registered voter. And then we can take a look and cross-check that. I mean, that's a, that's something that a committee can do and something that is helpful, because it's been my experience that, you know, we'll have people out there and they'll wanna vote one way or another, and then they get there and find out that they are not registered voters.
Aren't registered.
They have a kind of a feeling that they.
People aren't registered.
Yeah.
And that they don't know.
And they don't know.
And they come to vote and they don't know.
Or they never, but they registered, don't vote, don't, didn't know where there's, you know, they moved.
They moved, yeah.
So I'm assuming we'll do the same thing that I've done over the past. Will you and a couple of board members will attend the P I meetings? And we can do a presentation at a P I meeting, hurricanes, all that.
No, hurricanes won't let you, the hurricanes can.
No, they usually, they're usually apolitical. And again, we have to, we go careful that what we're doing is to send the information. But yeah, now, if we're asked five people to come out, yeah, we can, we can do that.
We have enough to share with everyone, but now. She'd be waiting too, after break. You'd have to be waiting.
What's her name?
Yeah, I saw him too.
I saw him.